Good morning, welcome to the Houston County Board of Commissioners meeting for this first meeting of the new year. Glad to see each and every one of you here. I will tell you, it should be a very brief meeting today. Usually the first meetings go long, but this one for some reason is going to be short this today. But we're glad you're here, hope each one of you had a wonderful new year, and are looking forward to 2016 as much as we are here. We're honored today to have Chuck Lewis, who's going to come forward in just a few moments and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. He had served time in the United States Navy, and he does an awful lot of work in this county, and even for this county as a locksmith. And we're pleased to have him here to tell us a little bit about his career in just a few moments. At this time, I would ask those of you that have cell phones, electronic devices, please silence them if you don't mind during the meeting, and those of you that can and will if you'd vow a man word of prayer. Dear heaven and father, we've come before you today, asking for your grace, asking for you to be with us in the deliberations of this board for the people of this county, father. We ask that you be with each and every citizen in this county, father. We wish health and happiness and prosperity for each and every one of them, father. We ask that you be with the employees this year. Watch over them for safety, father. We ask that you be with the men and women that may be in harm's way protecting this country, father. We ask that you bring them home safely to their families. We ask for peace, father. We ask for peace, not only in this county, but in this great nation of ours, father, and even in this world. For these things we pray, amen.
(Amen.) (Pleasure) Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, may be seated. You've got the election.
I'm Charles Lewis Jr. I don't know if y'all know Charles Lewis Sr. He was a City of Perry policeman, also started Houston Locksmith Service. So, I've come from Nautlinge. If you ever had Harper from him, you'll know. I graduated Perry High School in 1978. My dad graduated exactly twenty years earlier than that. My oldest daughter graduated twenty years after I did. So, we've got pretty good roots here, and we enjoy it. Later that year, seventy-eight, I joined the Navy. And I've been to Washington State, I've been to Bermuda, Hawaii, Iceland, and I've joined every one of them. Each one of those, I've learned something more, and I've brought to the next command. And I was been asked before, says, "Why would you go through such hardship and separation from family and things of that sort?" Well, you know it's not for the money. You know it's not for the glory or anything like that. It's just for the purpose of serving, and that's what we enjoy doing. And, for instance, in Washington State, my electric bill was fifty dollars every two months. So, I wish we could go back to that. In Bermuda, a gallon of, okay, a gallon of milk in the States back then was about a dollar twenty-five, dollar forty-five. There it was six dollars a gallon. So, you get where you go this morning and night, you want to pay for it. When I got out of active duty, I lost my job when McGee Goldberg jobs lost his, when we went through Barre, Stroyka, and, you know, and Glasgow. Every day when I woke up, it was either one or two things. It was a communist plot or CIA intervention. And there was a lull there, which was a good lull, and things calmed down. Today's servicemen, they go through a lot more than I ever went through. So, when you do see one, you do encounter a serviceman, praise them. Think they're not doing, like I said, they're not doing it for the money, they're not doing it for the praise. They're doing it because they want to. Sir, I think I've taken enough of your time. Again, I appreciate this honor, and God bless you all.
Just hold your position there just a moment, let us say a few words to you. First of all, let me thank you on behalf of the Board of Commissioners, as well as citizens of this county, for your service, for your service to this country first and foremost, but also for your service to this county that you continue to provide to the citizens of this county for the profession that you're in. It is an honor for those men and women that have served, and those of us that are not active or have never been in the military, we owe a great deal of gratitude to those of you that put your life in harm's way, separation from your families, protect the freedoms of this great nation of ours. And we do appreciate it, we appreciate what you have done, we appreciate what all the other men and women that have served this great nation as well. So, we want to say thank you. Commissioner Walker.
Thanks, Chairman. As Chairman Thompson said, thanks for your service to our country, and Tom McCall, one of our commissioners, I had the opportunity to serve in our forces, and it's a great pleasure and opportunity too to wear, you know, one of the United States. But I learned a lot of things too. I was stationed in Germany and some of the European countries for a while, and I learned I won't be there in the wintertime. It was very cold. If I said, "Get back to Georgia," I will never leave. But a pick like you make our community a great place to live, and our state, and our nation. And I knew your dad personally, and he was a great guy, and he had a long-term public service here in Houston County. So, we thank you, and we thank your family for what you do to make Houston County the county it is. Thanks, sir.
Commissioner Robson.
Thank you for your service, and we appreciate your service and your work and your ability to stay here in Houston County and contribute to the community. You look very much like your dad. No, because I could tell, well, yeah, it was like, I don't think, yeah. But your dad was a very nice man. He was.
He still is. He's big for him on right now.
He is. But we enjoyed seeing him and working with him, you know? It was great, so telling him I said hello. But I want to thank you for your service and what you've done for this community, and if there's anything that we can do to help you, just let us know.
Commissioner Thompson.
Thank you for your service, sir. And Mr. Charles, you call, I really enjoy knowing him. I too graduated Perry High School after your father, wait before you did. Yeah, well, way down the other way. Washington State, now the electric bill's not bad other than that. Even use gas, fifty people have air conditioning out there, but they do need it in the summertime I think the housing is probably three times as much as it is here, but the electric bill is probably about half, so, I mean, I don't guess that would even out. But thank you again for your service and what you do for our county, for staying here, and our school systems, producing a lot of good folks. Thank you, sir.
Commissioner McMichael, for a call on you. Jimmy Offrey from Flynn Industries, I guess you're here in this power.
It's a break, taking this.
It is, it's a lot cheaper in Washington State, man.
Commissioner Mike.
I'm sure that the meeting's running faster than it worked until a week ago, anyway. But had great pleasure knowing your dad. Knowing you, I know your dad, I just whispered over to Larry before we, I said, "He was your dad." See, then Gail said. But, anyway, I'm kind of like Jay Lee Coates, I've lived my life while I was on active duty also. But we thank you tremendously for your service, and folks like you make this nation really what it is. And we're glad that you made Houston County, it's still your home and things to this nature, and we stand ready to serve you as our community assistant. Thank you, Jim, for your service.
Thank you, sir.
Excuse me, there's right around front, we want to get a photograph with you.
(Inaudible)
You're in high demand.
On behalf of the people of Houston County, we'd like to present this placard to you. As you can see, it says, "Thank you for your service to our country," and it's got the county seal engraved on it. We'd like to present this to you, and we'll take a photograph, and then I've got a couple of other things we'd like to. All right. Got one more. Also, we've got a county, a payoff pin we'd like to give you, county seal, a payoff pin, I should say, and also an American flag, a payoff pin we'd like to give you. These are small tokens of our appreciation for what you have done for this great nation. Again, thank you.
And I thank you, thank you for the opportunity.
Yes, sir. Thank you for coming. Tell your dad I said hello.
I'm most certainly will.
Thank you very much, thank you for being here. Good to meet you.
Same.
Thank you. See, he'll be a great guy, really, thank you. Good to see you. Thank you, we appreciate you. Thank you.
We have, before we approve the minutes on December the fifteenth meeting, we have one agenda item that needs to be added. That will be item number six. It'll be an executive session personnel matters immediately following this meeting, and at this time, we'd need a motion to put that on the agenda, as item number six. And we will also take public comments and commissioners' comments before going into executive session. There will be no action taken from this executive session, and then, once we come back out from the exec session, we'll be able to adjourn without those of you that would like to address the board having to sit around and wait for us to come back in. I'll entertain a motion to add item number six for executive session to the agenda. Got a motion by Commissioner Thompson, got a second by Commissioner McMichael. Any discussion on the motion?
What's the motion for the, I know you said personnel, but does Tom need to state that?
Tom, you want to state it?
It'll just be an executive session for one of the items that is allowed under the law. In this case, it will be for personnel. That's all we'll do, especially in fifty years.
Did you think that we weren't doing something right?
No, I didn't say that.
Normally, the person makes the motion. Where am I supposed to say? Yeah, I really thought I might Michael, but I said, "For personnel reasons."
Okay. Any other questions or comments? If not, all those in favor, going to the exec session, raise your right hand. Motion carries. So, that'll be item number six on the agenda. The first order of business will be approval of the minutes from the December the fifteenth meeting. You've had an opportunity to look over them, and if there's no corrections or additions, we'll entertain a motion for approval. I make votes be approved, written, Mr. Thompson. Got a motion by Commissioner McMichael to approve them as presented. Any, is a second to the motion.
I'll second it, Jim.
Got a second by Commissioner Walker. Any discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Item number one on the agenda is public hearings on special exceptions, application for three special exception applications, one twenty-seven through one twenty-nine. Mr. Andrews, before you begin, I'm going to ask Mr. Hall, county attorney, to explain to these individuals in regards to covenants and the responsibility the county has on covenants, or does not have, I should say.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Those of you that are seeking special exceptions, the subdivision in which your properties are located could have restricted covenants. One of those covenants could be that it does not allow any commercial activity within the subdivision. Any action that the board takes today does not override the restricted covenants. So, if the covenant does restrict that, then your homeowners association or any other owners could, you know, seek to try to enforce that if they wanted to, and if it's, that would not be what they do. So, whatever the commissioners do today, if they approve it, that again will not take away any restricted covenant that may be on the property.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. Mr. Andrews, if you would present the three applications to us.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This morning, you've been provided copies of the actual applications along with any supporting documentation that was submitted by the applicant at the time of hearing. Hearing was held by the Houston County Zoning Appeals Board on December twenty-eighth, and the following is the summary and the recommendation of that board. Application number nineteen twenty-seven is for Claudia Harrington, property located at one ten Wilt's Court, that's in the Tarras subdivision. Ms. Harrington is requesting a special exception for a home occupation, her home occupation will be a tutoring business. The Houston County Board is owning the field, recommending unanimously approving application nineteen twenty-seven. At the hearing, Ms. Harrington stated that her business, again, would be a tutoring business. The home would be used as an office only. Tutoring services would be done online as well as in-person. Personal services would be done away from the home at sites like local libraries and things of that nature. Application number nineteen twenty-eight for LaShawn West, property located at six oh four Lexus Way, that's in the Harley Estates subdivision. Ms. West is requesting a home occupation, the nature of her home occupation will be a elderly care service. Houston County Board is owning the field, recommends this morning that application number nineteen twenty-eight will approve unanimously. Again, at the hearing, Ms. West stated that her, the nature of her business would be providing personal care for individuals at their homes and at personal care facilities. Her home would only be used as an office only. All services would be done off-site. Application number nineteen twenty-nine for LaQuinda Allen, property located three twelve Cavalry Court, that's in the American Heritage subdivision. Ms. Allen is requesting a home occupation, her home occupation will be a daycare service. Houston County Board is owning the field, recommended unanimously to approve application nineteen twenty-nine. Ms. Allen's business will involve providing home daycare for children ranging from ages six weeks to twelve years old, six days a week, running time from six AM to six PM. She stated that she would be providing information to bright start, as well as compliance with state agencies for the operation of the home daycare business. Again, this application comes with unanimously recommendation for approval from the Houston County Board is owning the field.
Thank you, Mr. Andrews. If you'll hold your position for just a moment, see if the commissioners have any questions for you. Commissioner McMichael, do you have any?
No, sir, I do not.
Commissioner Thompson.
LaShawn West, does that require license, state license, anything, or is it just?
She stated she was certified in several areas of providing.
That's just my information.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
Okay. Anything else, Commissioner Thompson? Commissioner Robinson?
No questions.
Commissioner Walker?
No, sir.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Andrews, you may be seated at this time. At this time, we have closed the regular meeting and opened a public hearing on these particular applications, and what I'm going to do is I'm going to batch these applications, I'm going to call them out, and I'm going to ask applicant if you've got anything to add to what Mr. Andrews has already said. If you do not, you don't have to say anything, after which I'll take any opposition to the applications. Application number nineteen twenty-seven, Harrington, are you present? Is the applicant present? Would you like to add anything to what Mr. Andrews has already said?
No.
Okay. Application number nineteen twenty-eight, West, are you present? Would you like to add anything to what Mr. Andrews has already said?
No.
Application number nineteen twenty-nine, Allen, would you like to add anything to what Mr. Andrews has already said?
No.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone here in opposition to any of these three applications? Anyone in opposition? I see none, I hear none, therefore, the party here, and now closed, regular meeting is reopened, and I will turn to Commissioner McMichael for disposition of these applications.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve application number nineteen twenty-seven, nineteen twenty-eight, and nineteen twenty-nine, as presented by the Flint County Zoning Board, and that the approval is submitted.
Got a motion for approval, need a second to the motion.
I'll second it.
Got a second by Commissioner Robinson. Any discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor of the motion approving all three, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Mr. Andrews, if you would tell the applicants before they happen to leave the meeting what their next step is.
Yes, sir. The action of this board will be forwarded to you in way of mailing for your records. After this meeting, the commissioner's office will be made aware of the motion to approve of your applications. So, sometime this afternoon, you may be able to go forward with the full application for your business licenses.
Thank you, Mr. Andrews. Does any of the applicants got any questions? You're welcome to leave whenever you need to leave. Best of luck to you in your endeavors and business, and we appreciate you for what you do for this county. Good luck. Second item on the agenda today is going to be board appointments, and as to the Houston County Development Authority, Commissioner Thompson, if you'd present those.
We have two appointments, and I'll do them together, Mr. Chairman, that's all right. Dr. Joe Richardson is in management with MERC locally. His resume reads like a who's who in America. In addition to a PhD, he has three multiple masters, he has multiple master's degrees. He can live anywhere in the world, and he chose Houston County to live with his family and work. Development Authority would be well-served by Dr. Richardson. And Ben Hubbard is a Houston County native, graduate of Mercy University with a finance degree, and has a master's degree also. Ben works at State Bank and has just been promoted to head of promotions for Houston and Doolitle Counties. And Development Authority will also be well-served by Mr. Hubbard. We're indeed fortunate to have these two men of such caliber that want to serve on our boards. And also, before I make a motion, I'd like to thank Shaw Blackman and Larry Walker III for their service to the Development Authority, and look forward to their service in the state and state house and senate. My motion is to approve Dr. Joe Richardson. His term will be one five sixteen through eight nine seventeen to fill the unexpired term of Shaw Blackman, and Ben Hubbard, one five sixteen through eight nine seventeen to fill the unexpired term of Larry Walker III.
Got a motion for approval, need a second to the motion.
I'll second, Chairman.
Got a second by Commissioner Walker. Any discussion on the motion?
I think Commissioner Thompson said it all, with the two highly qualified candidates, Chairman. Fortunate to have them.
Thank you. Is anybody else got anything they want to say? If not, all those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Motion carries. They have a meeting coming up in about another week, so they'll be notified today of the official appointment. Development Authority will be notified as well. The chairman, Byrd, is aware of the pending appointments, and he'll be notified today that they have been officially done. Item number three on the agenda is a pre-disaster hazard mitigation plan. Commissioner Thompson, I'm going to call on Chief Williams to come make a short presentation, and then you can do a motion if you don't mind. Chief Williams, come on up, if you don't mind, and give us a summary, because it's pretty lengthy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, the commissioners for allowing me to come before you today to present this. The pre-disaster mitigation plan is an update. This will be our third update, and one reason we want to do a brief presentation is, one, this plan's pretty big, about two-hundred-and-sixty-seven pages long when you add it all together. This plan first came in effect in September of two thousand and four. We updated it in May of two thousand and ten, so this is our third update. Fortunately, we've been able to get grants from Jima to do these upgrades all three times. This plan pretty much includes occurrences of hazards and events, nothing's changed. We still have flooding, tornadoes, droughts, thunderstorms, and winter storms that we prepared for. We updated the current inventory of existing and proposed buildings, infrastructure, critical facilities, updated the lost estimates to reflect changes of the hazard profiles and our inventory of our structures, and we provided a general overview of land uses and types within Houston County. All three municipalities participated in this event. We had several meetings throughout the year. Mr. Holland attended most of those for the board commissioners. We had our public works employees with us, utilities, one of Robinson's had utilities and gas, and all the public safety folks attended these meetings and made sure we had things in the correct manner. The approval of this plan allows the county, if it's approved, will allow the county to receive disaster funds if we do come to declare disaster in the future. Without this plan, we're not allowed to be able to get those funds, so there is a little bit of cost estimate, funding attached to this plan if it's not adopted. It just ensures that we're doing what we need to do. The plan is living document. You can see the results of that from the last two and a half weeks. We had a little drainage of the rain. I think we closed one road, and it was only a half of the lane on it on the North Perry Bypass. Everything else, the water was receded when it's supposed to, all the ditches were flowing properly and everything else, and that's the result of this plan. Our public works come out, they looked at this plan, we planned for it, they mitigated the situations in advance, therefore, we had no issues like some of the other counties had. So, I think it's a good plan. Over twelve months of work to get it accomplished, and now we're waiting for you for approval.
Thank you. I'm glad you touched on our recent rain event and all, because we're very fortunate in this county compared to many counties in the state, in the southeast part of the United States, and southwest of that nation. But we were very, very lucky, and we dodged a bullet, so to say.
We did, yes, sir.
Any questions, Chief Williams?
I just compliment you and your staff on a great job. I think of words to, appreciate it. It's joy and it takes everybody along.
Yes, sir.
Keep your famous cross for the next two months.
Yes, sir.
The snow and the ice event.
Sixty percent wetter and then thirty percent colder winter. And hopefully, starting today, as far as the cold weather goes.
I read a forecast the other day where they're talking about potentially ice or snow at some point in time the next two months.
You, on the El Nino, it will March or February, end of February, first of March, we'll have it.
When the worst snow we ever had here, following the El Nino, I remember, seventy-two, when that's been, or fifty-five, or whatever it was. I wasn't here, I haven't heard about it.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. I turn to Commissioner Thompson for disposition of this resolution.
Jimmy, if you live near a swamp, can you get mitigated? It's raining. Thank you for your service to this and your staff and public works and RC. I sat in on the first one that was made in two thousand, formalizing that plan, and that's really in-depth, and it's really been a good plan. My motion is to approve Chairman Stone could assign a resolution authorizing the adoption of Houston County Pre-Disaster Hazard Mitigation Plan for two thousand and fifteen, updated as prepared by the Middle Georgia Regional Commission.
Got a motion for approval by Commissioner Thompson, need a second to the motion.
I'll second it.
Got a second by Commissioner Robinson. Any discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Item number four on the agenda is in regards to qualifying fees for the upcoming election. I turn to Commissioner Walker for presentation of this.
Chairman, it's pretty lengthy. I'll first start by making a motion to set a qualifying fee for the two thousand and sixteen general primary and the general election candidates of the county offices, as I'll read follows. Judge of the probate court be two thousand one hundred and seventy-three dollars, clerk of the superior court, two thousand one hundred and seventy-three dollars, sheriff, two thousand four hundred and twenty-five dollars, tax commissioner, two thousand one hundred and seventy-three dollars, coroner, nine hundred and thirty-three dollars, chief magistrate, two thousand one hundred and seventy-three dollars, solicitor general, three thousand and twenty-nine dollars, county commissioner, post three, four, and five, three hundred and sixty dollars each, board of education, district one, one hundred and eight dollars, district three, board of education, one hundred and eight dollars, district five, board of education, one hundred and eight dollars, and board of education, which is in large seat, one hundred and eight dollars. That'd be my motion, Mr. Thompson.
Got a motion for approval, need a second to the motion.
I'll second.
Got a second by Commissioner Thompson. Any discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Item number five on the agenda will be the approval of the bills. Commissioner Robinson, if you'd present those today.
My motion that we approve the payment of the bills, the bills for this time between all the funds, total. The bills for this time between all the funds total three million two hundred and fifteen thousand four hundred and forty-four dollars and ninety-nine cents, and that's my motion to approve the payment.
Got a motion for approval, need a second to the motion.
I'll second it, Mr. Chairman. I've reviewed and agree with it.
Appreciate that, Commissioner McMichael. Seconded by Commissioner McMichael. Any discussion on the bills? If not, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. That brings us to the conclusion of the agenda with the exception of the executive session. So at this time, we'll take public comments, and I'll begin on my right-hand side of the room, the left-hand side of the room, as you may be seating, if you'll come forward.
Good morning, sir. My name is James Durkcheck. I live in one twenty-three South Thursday, apartment nine, over on the Georgia. I want to mention, sir, that I went to the city, one of our city council public hearing last night. I had a key discussion with the police chief. I don't like to discuss anything with the police chief in public unless, unless it's something that is compelling me. Always respect the police chief. I respected the police chief even when he was working in, in their cars, investigations in the nineties. But after my discussion, I made the police chief know that I was not disrespecting his position, I was just wanting a clarification based on police patrol, and he said the time in October. And then in the public hearing, the mayor and council had already been informed which jurist was going to be swearing in the city council positions for election. And that jurist was Judge George Non. I just wanted to address the council that the mayor and city council and police chief obviously had planned for a presentation done by a police officer by the name of Sabre. I've also had the experience of seeing Mr. Sabre do a lot of incidents in my presence. His open testimonial before his retirement, including what kind of work he had done as a police officer, the beat officer, I've seen him do that too. I just wanted to address the commissioner's test. I still don't have a clarification on specific incidents, and I was requested to call number one, but at the same time, he had the opportunity to address specifically my concerns with the police chief. And being in the position of police chief, he is not an elected official, and he serves, he serves as a position of police chief, and only, only at his will does he have to consider any changes pertaining his position. And I just wanted to share that with the commissioners thinking.
Thank you, Mr. Durkcheck. Hold on just a second, let me see if anybody's got anything they want to ask you. Mr. Walker, you got any questions for?
No, sir.
You in municipal court a good bit, so didn't know if you've got anything you need to ask.
No, sir, not this time.
Okay. Mr. Robson?
No questions.
None.
Okay. Thank you for your remarks. Anyone else on my right-hand side of the room? Anybody on my left-hand side of the room? Anyone on the left-hand side of the room? Jimmy, glad to have you here with us, well, we're glad to have all of you here, let me restate that. But when I was listening to that about the utility rates, I feel like we've got some of the best utility rates of anywhere in the nation, and I was a little surprised to even hear that. But I'm still pleased of what we pay to Flint Energy's and the service that Flint Energy's provides to us as consumers of power. Y'all do a great job, the entire group.
The rates in the Pacific Northwest have quadrupled over the last twenty years, quadrupled, but they started at a penny, a penny and a half, so they ain't polished yet. Hydroelectric power makes all the difference in work.
Yeah, my son has a family that gets out home, and it's power bills like seventy dollars a month.
Wow.
Even the time when he has to run a house. Police chief, that's the only thing I've ever seen. I'm not real sure the government don't subsidize it either, I don't know that.
Anyone else on this side of the room? Darlene, I know you cannot resist talking about chamber, so I'm going to go ahead and call on you.
Yes, sir. My privilege and honor. Okay.
You can brief everybody on the buzzer drop.
Oh, well, that is also my pleasure. That is not a technical chamber event, but obviously, it is a city and South Perry event, which we try to partner with them in a lot of their activities. It was quite a success with the rain forecast. I'm sure that we lost some attendees, but about eleven o'clock, the county courthouse got filled, the yard. Thank you so much for your partnership with that activity. It's a great event. You know, other communities in Georgia take what they have and make the best of it, and the buzzards come into Perry. Who knew that that would be such a treasure for our community? But I've certainly enjoyed attending, and I hope that you can join us if you haven't had that opportunity. The chamber ended strong. We ended right at four hundred members. We've never been more than four twenty-eight. Our goal is to hit that five hundred mark. I don't know if you remember that we had a membership drive back in the fall, that we actually entitled the Perry Five Hundred, had kind of a race motto with it, and we're going forward, we're moving strong into two thousand and sixteen. I encourage you to join us on, at our annual meeting on the twenty-eighth of January. It will be at Perry Arts Center, begins at eleven thirty, and we would welcome your attendance at that. If there's anything we can do, please let us know. It's certainly a great honor to be a partner with Houston County. Extremely excited about the new appointments on the Development Authority. And Ben Hubert is our treasurer for our chamber as well, and he's a graduate of our Leadership Institute in Perry. So I love, I love seeing leaders lead, and he's a natural fit for it, and so we're excited about that as well. So that's where we wrap up the year, and where we're looking forward. Another great year on schedule, and let us know how we can continue our partnership.
Thank you. Likewise, any way we can help you, we'll be glad to do it.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
Anyone else on my left-hand side of the room? Jeannie, glad to see you.
I will mention, I was doing a sum.
You can stand up, you don't have to come all the way up.
I was doing a summary report of what, for recycling, I had recycling done. In two thousand and thirteen, we had like a seven hundred tons that we recycled for the year. We're at almost a thousand tons this year for twenty-one.
Great. Thank you very much. Anyone else?
Chairman, I should have mentioned, I'll just say very quickly, y'all of you know about it, the Citizens for Excellence in Education Committee is gathering, communities getting back together again. We're going to be supporting a yes vote for the school's loss. East loss will come up on March first, on our presidential primary day, so turnout shouldn't be an issue. We've got to be sure we're going to start right away in educating people about the continuation of the penny sales loss for education.
Thank you very much. At this time, I turn to commissioners for any of their comments. Commissioner McMichael, I begin with you.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I want to say thank you for a great nineteen, two thousand and fifteen, as a matter of fact, on which everybody helped, happiness and prosperity for two thousand and sixteen.
Thank you. Mr. Thompson?
I'll echo that. Look forward to a good and prosperous two thousand and sixteen, even better than two thousand and fifteen, which was pretty good, wasn't it?
Thank you. Commissioner Robson?
I just echo the same comments, look forward to a great two thousand and sixteen.
Commissioner Walker?
Back to Mr. Chairman, I'm looking forward to a great two thousand and sixteen for commissioners and staff and the employees of Houston County, and a prosperous two thousand and sixteen. And we just have a great, great county that we live in, we're very fortunate, and I think, Jimmy, when he was talking, that, you know, these other counties just don't have the resources that Houston County has. And it's not only the resource we have, it's the people, the outstanding employees we have here in Houston County that make a real difference. And I'm just proud to be, I'm proud to be part of the team here, and we're a team. You go to other commission meetings, you go to council meetings, other governmental meetings, there's a lot of people, there's a lot of discord, and people not there for the same purpose, it seems like. We're fortunate in Houston County, and we're going to be a part of it.
Thank you. I echo what all of them have already said as well. I've met with various news media and already told them that I feel like two thousand and sixteen is going to be better than two thousand and fifteen, as far as production in the county, seeing things that are completed, what people are paying for. But I think it's, people need to know that the people sitting up here do not forget whether the resources are coming from for all those projects to happen, it's coming from the people of this county, and we appreciate that. We appreciate them giving us the opportunities to be able to provide those services because of their resources. Mr. Walker, I think you hit on something. I was sitting here when we was circling back for the public comments and all, and I was thinking that there are some governmental meetings in this state that are very restrictive on anyone addressing them. And I think this particular board and boards previous to this is always having an open-door policy as far as allowing the citizens to come and express their views, whether in agreement or disagreement. And I think that's the transparency in this government. I think the government belongs to the people, and I think it's important that they be given an opportunity to express their views in a public forum. And I think, again, that says a lot for the people sitting here, as well as people before this board, that have always allowed that to occur, and never placed restrictions on people coming in and saying something. With that being said, we'll entertain a motion for executive session, go in executive session, at which time, once we're finished with the executive session, we'll come back in and adjourn the meeting. Entertain a motion for it to go into executive session.
I'll move to go into executive session, Mr. Chairman, to discuss personnel issues only.
Got a motion to go into executive session for personnel issues. Need a second to the motion.
I'll second it.
Got a second by Commissioner Thompson. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Those of you that may have any questions for us before we go in, particular news media, if you'll come on up, we'll go ahead and answer your questions for you. Y'all have a good day and have a good year.